Good evening, Thousand Oaks, and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for December 15, 2014. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Would the clerk please call roll?
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Commissioner Nichols?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Terrell?
Here.
Chair Roundtree?
Also here. This is the public comment portion of our agenda for items not on tonight's schedule. We do not have any public comment cards for anything other than our agenda tonight, so we're going to go move right on to written comments, announcements, and continuances. Mr. Towne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have a supplemental packet with a few minor corrections and clarifications to your third case tonight. That's the Sage Mountain Assisted Living Project. And for anybody in the audience that doesn't have a copy of that already, the Recording Secretary has copies available. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Would the clerk call Case 6A?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6A regarding Case DPMJ 2014-70224. Applicant: Starbucks Coffee Company. Request: To allow the store to open at 5:00 a.m. instead of 6:00 a.m., seven days a week, and to retain the current approved closing times. Location: 2072 Avenida de Los Arboles.
And Ms. Young, I guess you'll be leading this project. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Tonight, we have a request from Starbucks. They would like to open an hour earlier at 5:00 a.m. instead of 6:00 p.m. I mean, 6:00 a.m. They are located in the Oak Brook Plaza Shopping Center, which is located in the southwest corner of Arboles and Herb's Road. This portion of Oak Brook Plaza is what we call the western portion. And it includes this portion, The Vons, Bank of America, P&amp;L Burgers. And this is the building that we're talking about where Starbucks is located, and they share the building with Chase and Papa John's Pizza. This is the Starbucks. You could see their outdoor area, and this is taken from the parking lot in front of the building. This is looking at the building from the sidewalk on Avenida de Los Arboles. And you could see Starbucks in the corner over here. This is looking at Starbucks from the sidewalk off of Herb's Road. You can't see it right here, but there's about a 10-foot grade difference between the building and the sidewalk. This is standing at the intersection, looking across Avenida de Los Arboles. It's about, let me see, 200 and, I don't know, about 250 feet from the building to the closest house across there, across Arboles. This is looking like kitty-corner across. This area here is their community recreation area, has the pool and meeting area, so there's no houses there. And this is taken from the sidewalk, looking across to the closest house. And so if we measure from the rear of the applicant's building to the property line, there's over 150 feet. And if we measure from the entrance, which is on the other side of the building, to the house, it's about 260 feet away. The approved hours for tenants in this building is 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight every day. The applicant is currently operating at 5:00 in the morning to 10:00 p.m., so they're not open until midnight, which they could if they wanted to. The delivery hours will remain the same, and the hours are 7:00 to 9:00. And this is pretty standard for the shopping centers in the city. Staff does not anticipate that there will be any noise impacts. They have been operating at 5:00 a.m. for quite a while, and we've not had any noise complaints. This is the type of activity that generally doesn't create any kind of problems early in the morning. The building is below grade, which should reduce the amount of noise generated, if there is any. And the building itself will act as a buffer, because the entrance is located on the opposite side of where the houses are, closest houses are. The project is exempt from CEQA. And staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the development permit, major modification, with the findings and conditions in the staff report. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Appreciate it. Commissioner questions for staff at this point? Commissioner Nichols?
A couple of clarifications. Thank you for your report, Ms. Young. On Page 5, there's reference to delivery hours, but just prompted a question. Is there a designated loading zone for this outbuilding?
Uh, no. I believe not.
Okay, so they just, trucks just park in the, right out in the middle of the parking lot streets then?
Well, typically, if it's a tenant, we would ask them to deliver at off-peak times. So not in the middle when, you know, everybody's in the shopping center.
But with delivery hours from 7:00 to 9:00, they have a pretty wide range of when they can deliver. And that's...
Yes.
I mean, people are in that shopping center from 7:00 to 9:00.
We have not had any problems regarding conflicts between the delivery trucks and people circulating around in their cars.
Is it typical to actually require tenants to have a designated loading zone, or is that not necessary?
It's not. Sometimes we require it, like if it's a big, you know, supermarket, or, you know, home improvement stores, you know, something that really has a lot. But something like a coffee shop, we wouldn't necessarily require them to have their own designated spot.
So would that be consistent with all the outbuildings, as you mentioned? Papa John's is there, we've also got McDonald's there, P&amp;L Burgers, all those, you know, non-shopping center buildings, none of those have loading zones in? Or designated loading areas, I should say?
I don't believe so. When this building came before the Planning Commission, at that point, I don't believe we knew exactly who the different tenants were. It was going to be a multi-tenant building, though. So we didn't require one at that time.
Okay.
And we have not had any problems.
Okay. And if you could clarify, on Page 5, Hour of Operations, it says the Hour of Operations for the tenants in the subject building is from 6:00 to 12:00. Is that just for this building, or is that for the entire shopping center?
That was just for this building.
So do the different buildings, like The Vons Building, for example, does that have a different approved hours of operation?
Uh, yes. When this building came before the Planning Commission, they wanted to keep the hours consistent with Vons, who came in with a request to open at 6:00 and close at midnight.
Okay, so even though it's a, so it was a different development permit, though, but the hours of operation are consistent through each of the different development permits? Is that correct?
Um, no, there's some variation between the different uses, but The Vons is part of this shopping center. It has the same DP, original DP.
Okay. Okay, so...
The Alberts, like if you look at the Albertson site, that has a different development permit.
Correct. But I just was, I was just trying to clarify, because the report says subject building. I don't know if that building had a separate set of hour, hours of operation than The Vons and all the others out there. So that's, that whole area is from 6:00 to midnight?
No, Vons has 6:00 to midnight, and this building has 6:00 to midnight. And I believe the other stores are more like 7:00 or 8:00 that they open. But as we found, there's variations between the different individual tenants in the Oak Brook Plaza Shopping Center.
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify, is it, if there's a difference between tenant hours or complex hours?
Mr. Towne, if you can give us some clarification there?
Sure. Thank you. The original hours for the overall shopping center was 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. But over the years, a number of different either tenants, or in this case, a particular building, have been approved through Planning Commission for changes, for extensions of hours. As you're aware, currently McDonald's is applying, well, they applied, and this body approved extended hours. That decision has been appealed to City Council, and they're currently reviewing that, that particular application. But what you have is, over the years, we have nine different modifications to the underlying development permits for changes in hours. Now, given the McDonald's application, and as we noted in the report, Taco Bell has also just submitted an application, and as well, three tenants for the western portion of the center have filed an application, and they are seeking 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So they're not looking for any additional hours on the backside, they're looking for, officially, three more hours on the front side. So these hours that Ms. Young mentioned are just for this building, but you have a variety of hours out there. And what staff is doing now, in coordination with property owners and tenants, is essentially trying to normalize these hours a little bit, to provide better consistency. Instead of this, you know, one application for one set of hours, trying to get more consistent hours for the entire center. And so I anticipate that those, in fact, both of those that I mentioned will become before this body. But the hours in this case, for this particular building, for the three tenants, which today are Papa John's, Chase Bank, and Starbucks, is 6:00 a.m. to midnight. Okay, and so as we're reviewing this tonight, where it is just for the Starbucks location, will then we be reviewing these on a case-by-case basis, tenant-by-tenant, as they want to, or as they request or propose revised hours? Uh, no, actually, the three tenants that I mentioned that recently applied for the western portion of the center, that application is, in fact, for that entire area, the entire area. So that will basically set a new sort of standard for hours of operation, because obviously tenants tend to come and go. You have, the mix that we see today may not be the mix that we see in five years. And so we're looking to hopefully establish almost consistent hours, except, probably the exceptions would be the drive-through restaurants on Arboles. McDonald's and Taco Bell may be exceptions to that rule.
All right, thank you very much for the clarification. Ms. Young, I did have a question to kind of continue, Mr. Towne, off of your dialogue. Not to say that every business shouldn't have their own right to argue their own case, I think that's good, and at the same time, provide some consistency. But is this a bit of a Band-Aid approach, where one business is doing it, then the complex is doing it, then the owners are getting together, and so it seems like there's seven or eight moving parts? So what I'm trying to say is, are we taking rights away from people having their own timeframe, but at the same time, requiring the city to go through this 13 times? Just a little lost there.
Actually, that's, what we're trying to avoid is going through this 13 times. We're trying to do it, really, two times, for the underlying properties that comprise the center. The Oak Brook Shopping Center is comprised of essentially two shopping centers that physically abut each other. But those were each approved under different development permits. And so we are trying to essentially create consistent hours for each of those two centers, with the possible exception of the drive-through fast-food restaurants. And our specific intent is to avoid the necessity of individual tenants or individual property owners there, because there are multiple parcels, having to come back before this body or the City Council to make these seemingly unending changes in hours of operation. So like I said, you'll be considering your proposal to have 5:00 a.m. opening for essentially the whole western side of the center, Osh and others, shortly. And you may see that as well for the eastern side.
Chair, one other, excuse me, just to add on to Mr. Towne, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Another aspect of Mr. Towne's comment, in the sense of, you are correct in that certain owners and tenants have the right to request changes. Certainly McDonald's stepped up and said, "We want to change our hours," and now we have Starbucks. And so, in seeing that, the McDonald's issue come before the Council for approval and appeal, there is attempts to try to make it more consistent if possible. But it is also important to realize that when you have these type of developments, commercial developments, you're going to have different uses over a period of time, 10 years, 20 years down the road. And when you do that, you're going to have different needs. Obviously, as you get to 5:00 in the morning, most type of uses are not going to need anything earlier than that. We, you know, we try to anticipate that. But certainly, there are some where maybe in the past, they didn't need to open up at 5:00 or 6:00 or 7:00 because of the use that they had. The other good thing, when you have these different hours of operation, frankly, let's take Starbucks versus another facility there, you might have parking issues that might be actually affected positively by having hard uses for one store in the morning, and then, as time goes on in the afternoon, that use isn't as much, and therefore, the other companies come in, let's say, for example, a cleaning place, or something of that nature, a gym maybe, where you might not have the exact same hours. And so it does help actually alleviate some of the parking issues that you might have, and balancing the uses over time. But it is important to note, just for the record, that the applicants do have the right to come in. We want to try to get them in and be consistent overall, but...
The other follow-up question, I'll throw this out to either of my friends here, has to do with more of the compliance point of view. Residents have filed a number of complaints that they were operating outside their previously approved hours. They were allowed to open at 6:00, and they were opening at 5:00. And in our packet here, it suggests that the city's policy is just to continue to let them do that until someone makes another decision. So my question is, if their permit says they're open at 6:00, or if it says 5:00, and if they're there beforehand, I think people in town want to know, why are they operating outside of what their permit says?
And that's a good question, Chair. I won't speak specifically of any co-compliance case that we have on the books, but when dealing with co-compliance cases, one of the main factors that we look at in going and prosecuting a case, and especially in the criminal arena, is that we're actually trying to get compliance. And I'll give you just a hypothetical, where you have someone who doesn't have a permit to build an addition to their house. And so they're in the process of building that, and there's been a complaint, we find that the person has not obtained any permits. We don't say, knock your building down, or the addition down necessarily, because we want compliance. What we do sometimes ask, and again, it's case-by-case, is to say, get your permits that you need to get before you move forward, because you are in violation of our code at this time. And if we see that they have actually gone forward with the permits, we don't actually keep that prosecution going, or we try to extend it, in a sense, because at the end of the day, what our goal is to get compliance. So if they have that right, and they obtain that right through the permit processing, for example, then that's, that meets the goal that we have. I can't speak for this particular case, because I'm not involved in it, nor is it appropriate for me to speak on a co-compliance case in this arena. But I would say that a lot of times, it's based upon, if we see that they're actually moving forward with trying to get compliance, then, since that might be one of the goals that we're trying to do, it's going to affect, at the end of the day, whether they pay fines, whether we put injunction against them, all those kind of things.
Thanks very much. Commissioner Terrell?
Yes, I think my question was answered, based on what Mr. Heer just said and what Mr. Towne was saying. But the bottom line is that any tenant that may come into any facility within, or any building within the city in the future, can always come in, in front of this body, and through the proper procedure of the city, to change their hours. It's not like we're just dropping bricks down and saying, "This is what it is." Am I correct?
That would be correct. And again, you're going to base, as you always do, your decisions on findings that you have. Any other Commissioner questions? All right, we're going to go to our applicant now, and representing Starbucks, Anthony Valdez. Anthony, you're here. And I think I also have Catherine Otis. Is Catherine here? Okay. And Shannon Meilik, you also, you're here for comments and questions also, or would you also? Okay. Because you'll have 15 minutes, so if you want to share your time. And for the record, I'll need your name and your city of residence, please.
Catherine Otis. Here representing Starbucks for the application to modify their hours to open one hour earlier. Thank you for your time tonight. First, to just speak to the code enforcement issue, we did receive a notification that we were in violation, and fairly quickly looked into the process for how we could come into compliance and obtain the additional hour, which originally was going to be through a minor modification process, which we filed. And I had asked if we could continue while we went through this process, and we were allowed to do so, that's the reason. And then we filed that application, and it was then determined that we needed to file the major modification, so we made the necessary adjustments and filed that, and have just been going through the process for a few months. We did have a community outreach meeting at the Starbucks last week. There were nobody, no people that came in opposition. There were people that came in support, like their 5:00 coffee. And so we, you know, offered that. I talked to one resident that had called the city, and I also wanted to invite that gentleman to the community outreach meeting, but I don't think that he attended. We are here to answer any questions you have, and appreciate your consideration.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Good evening. Do you have many people come at 5:00 in the morning?
A pretty good number, yeah. It's, you know, work, people who commute, so it's mostly weekday.
Okay, because it's probably right on the way to get on the freeway, too, so...
Right.
Thank you.
We have no more questions for you at this time. We'll probably call you up a little bit later, so thanks for coming up. We have some public speaker cards here. We have two of them, and then one written card. Mark Wurman's. Mark, you'll be up first. And you've got as much as five minutes, will be followed by Catherine Laurie. Okay. And for the record, Mark, your city of residence and your name. Thank you.
Mark Wurman's, Thousand Oaks. I live right across the street. I hear everything. And Starbucks isn't noisy. I'm one of the 12 people that are there 5:00 in the morning till about 5:10, get my coffee to get down to my airport. It is important that we have Starbucks there. Why? Because I need to get coffee. That's really important stuff. But more importantly, a lot of the people that work there are young people going to college and putting their own bill. They're paying their own way. Now, I know if we close Starbucks for an hour and I don't get my coffee, that's not going to be the end of the world, but that does have a ripple effect in our community. And when we consider stuff like this, we have to consider the people that do work at these places. That does support all of us. So I would like to see the Starbucks open at 5:00, for selfish reasons or unselfish reasons. But it is a good place to go in the morning at 5:00. They have great coffee. If you don't like it, some people like the coffee bean. But just go there. You'll see nice, quiet people, and we're all in there getting our stuff and leaving. But it's important to us that we can support our own community shopping center, and all the people there are in the neighborhood. So I encourage you all to vote for this change in the ordinance, or whatever it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wurman. Next up will be Catherine Laurie.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Oh.
Sir?
Mark?
What?
We have a question from one of our Commissioners. That was my bad. 15-yard penalty on the Commissioner.
Question.[1536.13][1536.13](Laughter)
That's right. Without asking for your address... Let's go to the instant replay. Here we go.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Commissioner Nichols?
Without asking for your address, I'm just wondering, which street do you live across? Herb's or Arboles?
I live on Shady Brook, which is across Arboles. So I live on Shady Brook Drive.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Now up, Catherine Laurie. And you'll have five minutes, and just your name and your city of residence, please.
Okay, good evening. My name is Catherine Laurie, and I live in Thousand Oaks. I am a teacher at Oak Park High School, so every day I commute from where I live, near Cal Lutheran, to Oak Park. And so I regularly travel along Pedersen, to Herb's, to Arboles, to Westlake, to Canaan. And now, we're, now, school begins at 8:30. But in order for me to get my work done, I have to go in a couple hours early before the kids show up. I have to do my calculus, I have to do, I teach classes where I have to concentrate. So I go in early, and like Mark, I need my caffeine in the morning. And I usually pick up a breakfast, sometimes a lunch, and not every day am I there at 5:00 a.m., but probably a third of the year, I'm there between 5:00 and 6:00 in the morning on my way to work. And when I get there that early in the morning, the people I see are commuters like me, people like Mark, traveling, who are on their way to, down to LA. People out exercising, walking their dogs, going on their morning runs, and they pop in to get a beverage. I see people who had worked the night shift, paramedics, first responders, nurses, people like that show up in the morning. And then I also see students going in there first thing in the morning before they go into school. And so there's a whole collection of people that are regular people there between 5:00 and 6:00 in the morning, who it's part of their daily routine, and we would love to have it continue. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Ms. Laurie. Any questions for our speakers? Locked out. No, thank you. All right, we're going to go back to staff now. Ms. Young, any additional comments or questions? Yes, we have, by the way, one written card from a Shannon Meilik in favor of the proposal itself. Pass that down. Ms. Young, any additional comments or questions regarding our speakers?
No, I have no more comments. I also like coffee, so...
Well, we have an opportunity for a rebuttal, if you would like, ma'am. You have an extra five minutes and come up if you'd like to say a few more words. If not, that's okay as well. But it's, it's your microphone now. You're fine? Okay. Before I close the public hearing, any questions from Commissioners of Staff or the applicant? All right, this is now closing the public hearing. Thank you very much. Commissioner comments, questions? Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. I remember when there was a blockbuster in that shopping center, and then we also had to approve the Chase Bank that went in there and the signage on that. So I think this is an excellent place for Starbucks to be, not realizing that it was close to the freeway. And I happen to always shop at That Vons, but I'm not really the stopping coffee drinker. So with that being said, I remove approval of DPMJ 2014-70224 with the findings and conditions as in the packet.
Discussion of the motion. Yes. Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I should note that this is my local Starbucks, and this change would be personally beneficial for me. I would be a customer there. I would be a customer there, not only on weekdays, but on weekends as well. So while I personally find this beneficial, I'm glad to hear that others in the community feel that way. I do share some of Commissioner Nichols' angst about having different sets of applicants come in. It would be nice to have one uniform set of rules across the board. At the same time, I recognize that other uses such as drive-throughs are different. There's amplified sound and maybe that requires a different set of rules. There are other stores in this area that might benefit from, there's at least one other coffee shop that might benefit from an early opening. So I hope that while I support this motion, I hope that in the future we can use this motion as a blueprint for other rulings that we have in the same property for similar kinds of uses. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Trappell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any angst on this at all because now I know that my daughter is truly going to Starbucks at 5:00 in the morning. The only concern I had is Commissioner Nichols, when he was asking Mr. Mark on Shady Brook is if you were going to have cream in your coffee or not. I think it's a great idea. I know that there's many Starbucks. It's just the kind of the method of the business model and it's extremely successful, so I'm going to go ahead and support the motion.
Commissioner Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you for making right, because I know this came up when we were discussing McDonald's and we encountered this issue, is there were a number of restaurants there. And I think it's indicative of our changing work culture. I am, too, one of those that am up before 5:00 and on the road. I prefer to get my coffee or tea at my destination because I don't want to spend an extra five or 10 minutes in line and get behind the traffic. You know, it gets that critical. And I know, you know, Mark, you probably witnessed that as too, as some of us, others that commute, is that's just the change of the way we do business now. Likewise, I frequent this Starbucks and I know if I voted against anything with Starbucks, my wife, well, mostly my daughter would probably question my sanity. But I think it's just really indicative of where we're going as a society and how we are work habits, our eating habits. And I also think it supports our local economy. I think it's a good effort. I certainly want to support our local economy, for those who want to get up early. You know, it's nice to know that you have a facility to go to whenever you need to be there. And I know we've, my kids also talk about not having activities in the evening and to have coffee shops open late, you know, that is, I'd rather have them at a coffee shop than a lot of other places. So I think it's nice to be able to accommodate that as we continue to mature as a community. And again, as we embark on our second 50 years now, I think we'll be coming along with a lot of these types of issues as we realize we are changing and we need to accommodate that, but within the realms of what we need. So likewise, I will support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Yeah, I'm too also going to support the motion. The only concern I have is that whatever rules we set for this particular business that were consistent, that we communicate them well, so we don't have constituents in the town saying, well, their permit says 5:00, why are they opening at 4:00? Then it becomes 3:00. And then the next thing you know, it'll be 24 hours. I mean, just give you an advance warning about urban sprawl. Love to be there at 5:00. I won't be there at 5:00, but to be open at 5:00 would be fine, so I'll be supportive of the motion. So please vote.
Motion passed 5-0.
And as a reminder, there is a 10-day right of appeal, the Community Development Department. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Would the clerk please call case 6B, please?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 6B regarding case SUP 2014-70469. Applicant approving ground. Request to allow an indoor sports training facility at an existing industrial building. Location 2001 Anchor Court, Suite A.
Good evening, Mr. Chua.
Good evening, Chair.
Your microphone needs to go on so I can hear. I think I heard what you said, but.
Can you hear me now?
There we go.
Good evening, Chair Roundtree. For your consideration tonight, and commissioners, by the way, sorry. Again, let's do that again. Good evening, Chair and members of the commission. For your consideration tonight is a request to allow commercial recreation use consisting of a sports training facility at an existing industrial building. The subject property is located on the northwest corner of Anchor Court and Rancho Cuneo Boulevard. This aerial photograph shows the subject property with the surrounding properties, which are all industrial in nature. The subject tenant space is on the west side of the building, which is around right here. But this picture, you're looking at the front parking lot of the subject building and the side of the building where the sports training facility is to be located. This picture was taken at around 8:45 in the morning. This picture shows the west side of the building and the parking space is adjacent to it. And the third picture shows the rear of the building and the rear parking area, rear parking and loading areas. These photos were, like I said, were taken around 8:45 in the morning. The site is zone industrial, which is M1, and is within the boundaries of the specific Plan 15 or the Rancho Cuneo specific plan. Commercial recreational uses are allowed within the specific Plan 15 with the approval of special use permit by the planning commission. There are two other commercial recreational facilities within the specific plan approved by the commission, namely the MB2 Raceway, which is an indoor car racing, and the Patriot Airsoft, which is an airsoft facility. Both are indoors. According to the applicant, the proposed facility will satisfy demand for sports court for the community in basketball, volleyball, and other physical activities. The facility will have membership only and will not be open to the general public. It will also provide exercise programs for adults and children. The total floor space area for the site is 22,271 square feet. 79% of that floor area will be occupied by the basketball court, which will also serve as valuable courts. The rest of the floor space will be used for office, warehouse, and other ancillary use. The facility will operate seven days a week and will employ three persons consisting of an office manager, a receptionist, and a maintenance person. Like I mentioned earlier, the, I'm sorry, like mentioned in the staff report, the facility will be operating between 5:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. daily. There is no current limit on the operating hours for that industrial building. The practice, the peak hours for practice normally occurs from 4:00 p.m. till about after work hours, around 10:00 p.m. Most of the activities, sports activities, will occur in the afternoon, the evenings, and the weekend. The property has a total of 145 parking spaces. 97 spaces are allocated for the tenants that's occupying Suites B and C, which is a TV manufacturing business. The remaining 48 spaces will be allocated for the proposed facility. This business will be limited to 48 parking spaces during regular working hours from 8:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m. on weekdays. The applicant also prepared and submitted a parking survey conducted over a 19-day period, which shows that there are an average of 112 parking spaces available in the morning between 9:00 and 10:30 a.m. and an average of 137 spaces available after 4:30 p.m. Staff has made several visits to the site and found that the parking survey is accurate. The project is exempt from CEQA under category, Class 1 category exemption. And with that, staff is recommending that the commission approve SUP 2014-70469 based on findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report. Staff is ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chua. Any questions? Mr. Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for that presentation. I just have one question about the parking area. Is there, there was reference in the report to there being activities after school hours, so for children. So my question is, are there, is there a designated drop-off and pickup spot in the parking lot for parents either dropping off or picking up their kids?
No, at this point, there's no, people would normally just park their vehicle and lead their children to the building.
And that would be in front of the entrance to the facility? And in the city's judgment, there's enough space to do that for multiple parents dropping off their kids?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chua, regarding the parking hours, or actually, this is more the hours of operation, if there are no restrictions of the hours of operation for the building, why is it proposed to restrict the hours of this particular tenant's use of their space?
For the, for the hours of operation for this tenant's space, we do want to limit the hours for the number of parking, on the number of parking spaces during the daytime to prevent conflict with the other business on site. The only purpose for that hours restriction is to, you know, to make sure that there's no disturbance to that, to that business next door.
Well, then why wouldn't we likewise restrict hours of operation for the adjacent business so they wouldn't impact this facility?
Because the adjacent business is a manufacturing business. The manufacturing business is inherently allowed in the municipal code in an industrial zone. This is a special use permit where staff, and it's a discretionary permit where staff can limit the operation based on what staff has seen as, I mean, based on what staff will see as an issue. And at this point, the big issue for recreational facility like this would be parking because normally these are allowed in the commercial areas, not in an industrial area. Manufacturing buildings such as these don't have as much parking spaces allocated as much as commercial buildings. So that's why we restrict the number of parking spaces during normal operating hours.
Okay. And if the normal business operating hours for this area would be 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 in the afternoon, and the peak operating hours for this recreation facility start at 4:00 in the afternoon, there seems to be only one hour of overlap and that their peak would be after the business hours of the manufacturing facility, it seems to me that there really is no conflict and there would be no need to restrict the hours of operation.
Well, at this point, the restricted hours of operation is like a safety net for us to be able to enforce to make sure that there'll be no conflict between the two. It doesn't look like there's conflict right now because of what we see right there as far as what's out there right now. But what we don't see is who's going to move into the tenant's B and C if, in case, the other business moves out. So we just want to see, I mean, we want to make sure that in the future there will not be a conflict.
It seems to me your most potential conflict is from 8:00 to 5:00 during the day, not in the evening, and that's what's puzzling me. I understand your concept and I understand the concern, but the timing doesn't seem to match it, and that's where I was puzzled. But that's fine. Thank you for the input.
Hey there. Commissioner Reynolds?
Mr. Chua, didn't we also approve, and I can't remember, was it gym or if there was a dance?
A dance studio was approved on Taylor Road.
Okay.
This was years ago.
Right, right. And also recently, a martial arts studio.
We have martial arts studios in the area, yes.
With restricted hours.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Basically, the restricted hours is, like I said, to prevent conflict from.
Commissioner Trappell?
You know, I regret that I didn't call staff and ask this question earlier because it just came up this time, and it may be actually a question for the applicant, Miss. The packet says that they're going to employ three persons. You know, this probably is a question for the applicant. Seven days a week from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. I've owned business for a long time. The math doesn't work on that, so I have a figure it's three positions as opposed to three employees. Would that be a better question for the applicant?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I'll reserve for that. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? No? Great. Then we will go to our applicant right now. John Bezen. John, if you want to come up, give us your name and city of residence. And you'll have 15 minutes and you're probably familiar with the speaker lights in front of you, but when it's green, you're free to go. When it turns yellow, you've got a minute. And when it's red, then you can finish your comment. So thank you very much.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. I am, I'm just here because there's been a longstanding need in the community for more, just basically court space for kids to play basketball and volleyball on. You know, I've been in the area for 15 years and my kids all play sports here in the Canal Valley, and it's a great experience. But I can tell you that it is incredibly difficult to get any time on a court anywhere. So we, it's always come up in conversations among parents and friends and family, and we've always said, why not try to put something together for the community so the kids have a place to play? And that's what this is about. So, you know, we're trying to create this facility so that teams can come in and practice and play some games, and it's basically an off-hours business. It happens when the kids are not in school, for the most part. There'll be some use in the daytime. Maybe we'll have some, we're planning to have some senior programs, exercise programs, some other ones for kids and toddlers, maybe much, much lighter during the peak, during the off-peak hours. And then in the off-school hours, there'll be basketball and volleyball training going on. And so that's what we're trying to accomplish here and we hope that you can vote in favor of the planning department's recommendation.
Well, I know I have someone to my left who's eager to ask you a question. Commissioner Trappell?
Eager is not the word, but the, I am. And forgive me, what was your name again?
John Bezens.
Okay, okay, John. Thank you so much. I was just looking, I was just curious. I think the model is rather unique, so, and I like that kind of stuff. But we were talking that staff says you're going to employ three persons, but if you're open seven days a week and you're open from 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. So you're talking about three positions where people are going to be rotated, three people there at a time, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's a very good question. The way the model works is that most of the time, there'll be a coach with the players, right? So these, the coach is part of the user of the facility, it's not one of the employees. So there's always going to be someone coaching the kids. And they'll be from maybe a club or a rec group or some recreation league, and they'll come in and coach their kids. So the staff that's there is just basically a monitor. And so the three employees are not always there at the same time. It's just a way of covering, one of them will be there at any given time just to sort of open and monitor what's going on. There'll be a receptionist to let the people in. One of the employees is there to, you know, a big deal in basketball and volleyball is to wet mop and sweep the floors in between practices. So the employees are there just to sort of help up and help out and let people in and out and keep an eye on things.
Okay, so what we're talking about is that there's going to be, you're not going to have three people there from 5:00 to 10:00, seven days a week. What they're talking, there's going to be somebody there dealing with your customers or your clients as they're coming in. It could be one people, person, it could be two. That's what you're talking about?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. So, all right, that's all I needed. Thanks.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Good evening. So this is a facility, like the CYBA could come in, the team could come in and practice?
Absolutely.
Okay, because I know when my son played ago, played, and it's been many, many years, that there were really very few places they could go and practice, so.
Yeah. That's true. Thank you.
Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I have a couple of questions about water. One of the things that struck me looking at your design plan, at the floor plan, is the absence of showers in an athletic facility. And I wonder if you could walk me through the thinking behind that decision?
Well, the use is, it's similar to like, this goes on every day. There's probably practices going on all over the place tonight, right? So how it works is the kids come in after school. Practices usually last for an hour to two hours, probably average an hour and a half. And so normally. to two hours, probably average an hour and a half, and so normally, parents drop the kids off, they come back and get them, maybe they go shopping in the area, maybe go out to dinner, and then they come back and pick up the kids, and the kids really just sort of hop back in the car and shower at home. I mean, we, we don't plan to provide any shower facilities at all.
And, and you also feel the same is true for the, you mentioned there's possible senior or adult programs during the day?
Yeah, it's a very good question, but we're not trying to create a health club, so to speak, right?
Sure.
So it's, it's really to come in for a program, a practice, and then leave. So, so every, people will be coming and going every hour or so, in the, hour and a half, right?
This is a hypothetical, but down the road, if you decide the business model changes a little bit, or for whatever reason, you say, hey, you know, showers really are necessary, have you walked through what the process would be to put those in, what additional permitting might be necessary for that, that sort of?
Oh, absolutely. If there were any changes at all to the facility, we'd come in and put plans together, we would submit them to the city, pay the permit fees and get plan check done, and then go through the inspection process. I mean, I can see potentially maybe down the road, that may be a need, so I think it's a great point. So, but if we were to do that, we'd definitely bring it here first and make sure we could get approval for that.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, you're saying your current assessment of the business model is that the facility as designed, with the customers as designed, doesn't currently require showers, but if needs change down the road, you're certainly not averse to putting them in?
Not at all.
All right, thank you. And then the other question I had, water-wise, is you mentioned wet mopping the floor in between sessions, and there is a janitor's closet on the floor plan?
Yeah.
I don't see a sink in there, so where, where's the water for that wet mopping going to come from?
Yeah, the, the wet mopping process is sort of a, it's a spray that you put on a, it's like a dust collector. This kind of court has a large dust, it's like a big dust mop, and you, you put a spray on it, and it picks up the dust as you go up and back. So, so that's the process.
I see.
And, yeah, if we, if we do find a need that we need a wash tub or wash basin, we'll certainly come in and secure permits for that.
Sure. And I've also seen other gyms use pre-moistened materials to do the same job.
Exactly.
Right. All right, thank you very much.
Commissioner Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also had an employee type of question. You mentioned that you may have, for example, training, some type of athletic training, whether it be, you know, besides the groups, maybe some summer program for seniors. You don't intend to be bringing any facilitators in or instructors in, this would just be, you're just providing facilities, so you might say, hey, during the summer, we're going to try and recruit someone to, to do this, but you yourself will not be actually leading classes per se, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I may coach some basketball here and there, but that's about it.
Okay. And then, for those kids that show up, but the coach doesn't, who's responsible?
Yeah, the parents are responsible and the coach is responsible, so that's, that's part of why we'll have someone there, right, to keep an eye. If, if a coach doesn't check, and that's why this business is all by appointment and by reservation. So everyone knows, everyone that uses this facility will have a pre-arranged reservation, and they have to check in the door when they come in, and, and the coach has to be there for the, for the players.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions for our speaker? Thank you very much, we'll come back to you in a little bit. Appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you.
All right. Back to Mr. Chua for any additional comments, questions, concerns?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Well, you're back to your rebuttal now to overcome the objections that you just got from city staff and the public speaker cards that didn't fill out tonight. So you have the podium for another five minutes, if you like. If not, that's okay as well. You're going to pass? Okay, you're good to go. I'll now, Commissioner Nichols, for staff, we do have a question.
Mr. Chua, one more question regarding the parking. I noticed in the report, you were kind of by default calculating the parking requirements for tenants B and C, and therefore, whatever's left over was all that tenant A could have. But if parking calculations were to be done for this use, would it be as a, as a, for lack of a better term, manufacturer use, or as a recreation use? And if that were the case, how many parking places would be required?
That's a good point. The way we approach this, and the same approach we did for MMB2 Raceway and Patriot Airsoft, is we calculated the square footage of the building, assuming that it would be operated as a manufacturing, which is at one per 500. For, for tenants B and C, we know that they have a large, their, their actual demand calculation is less than 97. However, we put it at 97 because we're anticipating that if this building is being used for some other use, then, you know, we have made an allowance for that. And the rest of it is dedicated to the, the basketball court, which we calculated at the, I believe it's about 20% office and 80% manufacturing. So it comes out around 40, 48 spaces. So that building is calculated for, for a manufacturing building, and that's, that's, that's what we're using during the daytime. That's why we had, we set a limit for that number of parking spaces between 8:00 and 5:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff before I close the public hearing? All right, we'll close the public hearing and open up for comments, questions from Commissioner Reynolds.
Thank you. I think this is a great use of the building. As I mentioned before, that I know when my son was very active in sports growing up, that there were very few places to practice, and the CYBA, we'd have to share with the other groups and everything, so I think this is a good use of an empty building, and I support the project, so I'll move that we approve SUP 2014-70469 with the findings and conditions in the packet.
Discussion on the motion. Commissioner Turpil. Oh, you were, you were just, okay. Commissioner Nichols. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would still like to consider the parking hours change, or the operating hours change, if the maker of the motion would so consider, and I'll give you the reasons why. Because of the limited conflict I see, because of the uses, obviously, the manufacturing facility is in the, it's mostly a day-use area, and this would be mostly an evening use and perhaps summer use area, but I don't see necessarily a conflict, and if they don't want to perhaps leave it wide open, perhaps at least extend it to 11:00 in the evening. The reason I'm thinking that is if the applicant is finding himself successful and wishes to squeeze in one more session, which would likely be for adults, I don't think many kids are going to be there till 11:00, but to have an adult session later at night, this would give the opportunity, and since we've been going through the routine of extending hours as we just did, I would rather have it err on the side of flexibility, where the applicant then could, you know, extend the hours if they found it beneficial to do so. And likewise, if that's the case, I would like to, you know, make it very reasonable for the applicant to, you know, gainfully employ his employees and make this a successful business. Likewise, there's no neighbors in the area that are going to be affected by the minimal traffic that a few people are going to make there. So if you would consider that, I would, I would at least suggest we extend the hours to 11:00, if, if my fellow commissioners would agree to that.
Chair, just for the record, Mr. Nichols, you're, you're requesting that as a friendly amendment, you would, for the operating hours only, that it goes from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And I don't have a problem with adding that to my motion unless there's a commissioner that's, or commissioners that are really opposed to it, and so the motion would fail because of extending the hours. So I'd rather get a nod yes or no from the other commissioners, and, and, because I would hate to see the, the whole thing fall through because of extending it one hour, where then if there were commissioners that were opposed to the additional hour, I would ask that you make this an amendment to the motion then. So, we could ask the commissioners, Chair?
Commissioner Turpil.
Yeah, I have, I have no problem with having the hour extended. I actually think it's a, it was a little bit of foresight and a good idea on, on part of Commissioner Nichols. It doesn't mean they, they have to be open to 11:00, they can close at 9:00 if they wanted to, but I, and I have a hard time believing that the applicant would have a problem with that either, so I have no problem with that at all.
Commissioner Newman.
I have no problem with either the applicant's proposal or the extension of hours, I think both are good ideas. Thank you.
I was wondering if we'd have to have the applicant come back up, reopen the public hearing, and see if the applicant agrees to that.
For clarity purposes, I'm going to reopen the public hearing again and ask our applicant to come on back up, so we don't plant ourselves right into a corner here. We want to make sure you're clear and participate in this whole process.
Okay, John Bezens, again, thank you very much for this consideration. I think that would be fabulous to add an hour of operating time, that would really help the business and help create more time for people to use the courts. I think it would be great. Thank you.
Okay. No issues with the, the tenants next door or anything like that? You can foresee? Nothing? Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, with that, I will, oh, I'm sorry, did we finish with Commissioner Newman's?
I will now officially close that public hearing. Commissioner Reynolds, if you would like to restate your motion with Commissioner...
Yes, I move approval with the extension of the, okay, there we go, back to, I move approval SUP 2014-70469 with the one change of extending the hours to 11:00 p.m. seven days a week.
Discussion on the motion. Please vote.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you for choosing Thousand Oaks to put your facility in. I know there's a lot of happy people watching our show tonight. No, they're at basketball practice, they're not watching, but they'll watch it on a rewind, maybe. That's right.
Being 5-6, could we get them to lower the hoops?
Yes, and just as a reminder, there is a 10-day right of appeal with the Community Development Department. With that, we are now going to move to case 6C.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 6C regarding case TTMJ 2014-70374 and SUMJ 2014-70373. Applicant Willis Development, request to allow modifications to the design and number of units of a previously approved assisted living facility, and to divide 56.15 acres into three lots of record. Location 3400 Grande Vista Drive.
Good evening, Ms. Leopold. You'll be heading our project tonight. May I get your microphone on air?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Roundtree, and members of the commission. This request is to modify an approved assisted living facility project. The modification consists of a boundary change between the two lots in the tract, and to modify the assisted living facility design. There's also a request to approve the addendum to mitigated NIG deck number 272. This particular slide shows the, the project area, it's approximately 56.16 acres in size. The yellow portion shows the developable area on the far east, and then a private open space area along, parallel to the freeway. Wendy Drive is to the far east, and the relocated post office is further up Grande Vista before you get to the terminus of the cul-de-sac where the project begins. This is a view from Grande Vista Drive, the terminus, and showing the project site with the hillside area. The background of this project, in April of 2009, the Planning Commission approved a commercial office building. In December 2012, the Planning Commission recommended approval of a land use amendment, legislative zone change, and entitlements for a 111-bed assisted living facility. And a month later, January 2013, City Council approved the assisted living facility as recommended by the Planning Commission. Currently, the application, which was deemed complete for processing in August of 2014, requests current changes to the assisted living facility. One of the changes is a tentative tract map, major modification. This map was previously approved for two lots. The current modification adjusts the lot boundaries and includes, as I mentioned, a private open space strip of land bordering the freeway. The acreage that consists of the private open space land is 8.09 acres, and that consists of 5.91 acres of the area that's proposed for the assisted living facility, and 2.1 acres of private open space. The 48.07 acres is requested to be designated as public open space. Again, this was the previous approved lot boundaries, which show the 56.16 acres and the previous developable area where the assisted living facility was proposed. This area again shows the overall project boundary in red and the subject property in yellow for the two lots. The other change to this assisted living facility, to the project, is to propose a 130-bed assisted living facility. 98 units will be designated for assisted living and 32 units for memory care. The project consists of a three-story building with a limited four-story element. Changes to the special use permit consist of accessibility improved. Currently, the driveway is at 7% gradient, and the application is proposed at a 5% gradient. They're lowering the whole project site, which will improve accessibility. The grading calculations are further refined, there were additional tributaries that weren't considered when the, and debris basins that needed to be calced out for the grading, which are currently taken under consideration. Additional parking was added, the architecture was redesigned to a modern craftsman design. The average and overall height of the building was lowered, the average height went from 35 feet down to 33 feet seven inches. Building coverage was also reduced, went from 21% down to 16%. And the building is sited closer to the freeway with enhanced landscaping, this is condition number 84. On the parking, the parking is also addressed in the supplemental packet that you received this evening. The, there is 56 parking spaces provided and 33 parking spaces that were required, and this equates to 0.43 spaces per bed. This particular slide shows a site plan of the project site. As I mentioned, most, most of the, the facility is a three-story element with the four-story element sort of tucked in the back, and this is a limited view from the front that you would see the four-story element. The design changes are such that the original office design was at 112,012 square feet. As you can see, the current square footage of the building is 101,743 square feet, so it's been lowered. Parking spaces, of course, have been increased, and the building footprint has been... Parking spaces, of course, have been increased and the building footprint has been lessened. The average building height, as I just mentioned, went from 35 feet down to 33 feet 7 inches. This particular slide shows the grading changes and essentially the cut has been increased in cubic yards, the fill has been reduced in cubic yards, and the export has been increased. And this is mainly due to the refined calculations regarding the grading and the debris basins. These debris basins would have had to have been calculated during the previous project when it went through formal grading, plan review. As a result, we do have increased encroachment into 25% in steeper terrain. This particular slide shows the proposed front elevation adjacent to the 101 freeway. The parking entrance to the parking structure is situated at the further west end portion of the project. These particular elevations show the north elevation, the east elevation, and west elevation. And the project site, or the project, actually, the design is composed of earth tone colors, materials. There's a color board submitted for your consideration. This rendering is showing a view from the northeast from the 101 freeway without landscaping and a view, same view, from the 101 freeway with landscaping. This particular photo simulation shows looking northwest from the 101 freeway without landscaping and again, looking from the northwest from the 101 freeway with landscaping. The environmental review for this project consists of the original mitigated negative declaration number 272, which was prepared for the original office project. No significant new or, new impacts or mitigation measures were determined and as a result, an addendum was prepared to the original mitigated neg deck. Staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission approve the project pursuant to the findings and subject to the suggested conditions of approval contained in the staff report. There's also an additional finding in the supplemental packet that will need to be considered and also the condition, there's a condition also that was modified. The addendum to the mitigated neg deck and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, the tentative tract major modification and the special use permit major modification. Staff is available for any questions. Rick Burgess is available for any environmental questions. We also have members from the Public Works Department and our landscape architect, John Edes, is also available for any questions. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Leopold. Once again, great job. Commissioner Questions for staff at this point. Commissioner Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Leopold, for the report. I have a few questions. I'm not sure who can answer them, but I'll throw them out there. I see you've got quite an assortment up here, so I'll start off with one which may be between you and Mr. Burgess. In page 29, 32 of the report refers to grading and debris basins and such, and I believe there's also reference in the environmental document. In light of our most recent storm and the result therefrom, are the calculations for debris flow based on a natural occurring vegetated slope condition or a post-fire mudslide prodded condition?
My thoughts are such that it would be the former. It would be a natural condition, but I would like Jim Taylor with Public Works Division, who's our hydrology expert, to answer that question for you in greater depth.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I don't know precisely which that is, but I can tell you this. The difference between a post-fire condition and a natural, fully recovered watershed-type condition, when you run all the numbers through the equations, amounts to about 50% difference as far as debris calculations go. That's generally accepted to be within the tolerance of the accuracy of hydrology calculations in general. So, we will thoroughly and exhaustively review that. If that particular fire factor that you're talking of is very important to you, like if it has to be assuming that there was a recent fire, recognize that it will increase the debris volume slightly, I believe. And I would probably defer to the engineer when he makes his presentation. Maybe you can mention this, Bill. But the bottom line is, it won't make that much difference in the volume. And if it does, if it suits you, we can go ahead and make sure that the applicant fulfills that calculation for you.
I just want to make sure that we consider that because I know we're looking at a very similar, well, actually, we're just on the backside of the hillside that just gave way last weekend. Very similar in composure. Again, I'll have to defer to Mr. Burgess and those who know our geomorphology better than myself. But nonetheless, I just say, hey, you know, with that in our rearview mirror, it'd be nice to make sure that we've fully addressed that. So, if we do have someone on staff here with the design team that can help with it, that would be wonderful. I do have a few other questions. Ms. Leopold, in the report, you mentioned that the applicant will need to cross over city property to get from Grande Vista to their property. Could you explain how that ownership pattern is? Is it publicly owned? Is it a private parcel? Is it right-of-way? I'm not quite sure.
It is a city-owned property and it is located between the terminus of Grande Vista and the applicant's property. It will have the city gateway sign, which the applicant is conditioned to construct on it. And essentially, it's sort of challenging because in looking at a location for a project sign, it doesn't, it creates more difficulty. It's approximately about 50 feet in depth, so the project front property line doesn't begin until 50 feet back from the cul-de-sac.
Is that what appears to be somewhat of a triangular parcel at the end of the cul-de-sac there?
That is correct. It's on sheet two of your grading, or your tentative tract major modification exhibits. You can see it at that, on that particular plan.
So, if not for permission from the city, this parcel would be landlocked in, is that correct?
That's true.
Okay. All right, thank you. On page 36, condition number 39, there's reference to access to the open space. Is there, well, actually, I think it's referring to access on Lot 2 if the city were not to take it as open space. But is there any requirement or request for access to the open space from Grande Vista for trail access or anything like that? Because this is referring just to Lot 2 and not Lot 1.
I'm sorry, I'm sort of mixed up on the pages here. Could you--
Yeah, it was condition number 39 on page 46 of the report. And it doesn't specifically mention. It was more of a question than what wasn't said. I didn't see any request for access over Lot 1 to get to Lot 2 for access. I'm thinking more like for trail access, things like, is there no need for public trail access in this area?
I would like to refer that condition, or your question, the answer to your question to our deputy director.
Thank you, Ms. Leopold. And Commissioner Nichols, in response to that, the purpose of condition 39 is that if, for some, at this point, unforeseen reason, the city did not take title to Lot 2, which is the open space lot, what this does is essentially require that the applicant grant a trail easement over the northerly 300, a northerly, a 300-foot-wide strip along the northerly boundary of Lot 2. And the purpose of that is because in one area, there is a planned public trail, a portion of which extends a little bit into that 300-foot-wide area. And that was pursuant to the Cano Canyon's management plan for about a 4,000-acre area in the northwest part of Thousand Oaks. It was approved by the Cano Open Space Conservation Agency Board of Directors last year. And so, this essentially ensures that at such time, and frankly, we don't have a schedule yet for construction of that trail. It depends in part on the northerly portion of Seventh Day Adventist's property going to city ownership. But long-term, with a long-term vision, we wanted to assure that we have that ability to construct a trail in that area. So, at this point, we anticipate taking that Lot 2 in fee as the city and then transferring it to COSCA subsequently. But again, if for any reason we didn't end up doing that, we want to at least assure that we have easement rights for that planned trail.
And thank you, Mr. Towne. Is there apparently no need for access from Grande Vista to get to that open space at this point?
Actually, from the, from the end of Grande Vista where it cul-de-sacs, there's already about a two-and-a-half-acre parcel that is owned by COSCA in fee that was donated to us by the postal service when that regional collection facility was first created. So, we already own open space that abuts the cul-de-sac and in fact, extends right up that steep hill. There's an old road, I'm sure you've seen--
Yes.
--that goes right up there. And that abuts the Seventh Day Adventist property, which is slated for city ownership as public open space, so that, I think, will eventually be developed for public trail access purposes.
Okay. All right, thank you. That helps to clarify that. Ms. Leopold, back to you, I think, but you can help me out here. On page 49, condition number 54, it refers to the SUP as expiring December 15th, 2017. But earlier in your report, or I may think it might be another condition, the tentative tract expires April 3rd of this coming year. Does that present some type of a conflict or does that just mean the applicant has to be real quick to get the tract map completed?
Well, you're correct. Certainly, the applicant could be very quick and get the tract map completed, but we're basing the timing on the original tract map, which was approved back in 2009. So, the legislative has had automatic time extensions for the tract map, but they're nearing pretty much a terminal date here. So, essentially, the condition in the tentative tract major modification does allow for a time extension to be requested by the applicant. So, if the applicant does not, is not able to record the final map by April of 2015, they can ask for a time extension for 18 months.
So, they still have a little bit of time left then?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then a couple items here, which you may or may not have the answer to, but I'll ask them nonetheless. On page 80, condition number 175, it's actually a fire department condition, refers to access. But I had a question because I noticed that the northern access route on the backside of the structure is turf block. And I just was questioning if that will be substantial enough to support the weight of an 80,000-pound fire engine?
Yes, the fire department did look at that design. They do have some specific conditions. Condition 186 on page 81 at the bottom there, they do talk about a redesign of that turf block or grasscrete, as they call it. They're concerned about the walkways being pushed to the side of the turf creep rather than in the middle. And that's to make certain that there's no conflict between pedestrians and that may be exiting the building in an emergency and the fire truck personnel that would be accessing the turf block portion with their vehicles.
Yeah, thank you. In fact, I had noticed that as far as that and also at 184 regarding delineation, but I didn't see anything as part, as actually supporting the weight of the vehicles.
The turf block or grasscrete, whatever the term or the particular material is, has been proven to support a 20-ton vehicle. So, it's been used in other applications and fire department is comfortable with that particular material.
Okay. And I noticed in, excuse, going back to condition 181 for turnaround, there is a turnaround on the lower access road, but not on the upper one. Is that intentional? The fire department doesn't require turnaround on the upper one?
No, they do not need, it's been determined by the fire department, they do not need a turnaround for the turf block or grasscrete area.
Okay.
It's short enough that they can simply back down and turn around in that area.
All right, thank you very much.
Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Ms. Leopold.
Good evening.
Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Let's see, I'll start with, I'll start by noting that you said something to begin with, that you seldom hear with reference to this part of Thousand Oaks, which is that Wendy Drive is to the far east.
That is true.
I've got one question about parking. This is on page 31 of the presentation. And it looks like the application allocates 56 parking spaces in total. And also notes that there are a maximum of 30 to 40 employees on duty. And I, well, first, I presume this means concurrently? Is that accurate, 30 to 40 onsite concurrently?
Typically, for these facilities, it really depends on how the, how the activities are scheduled. A lot of times, you'll have, the maximum time you might have parking concerns is when the shifts are overlapping.
Right.
And depending on how the facility is scheduled and the activities are scheduled, it really, the problem is that it really depends on the operator of the facility to ensure that parking is available and that, for the employees as well as for any guests.
And that's what I was really getting at, is worst case, if there are 40 employees, let's say, in a given shift and overlap because the next shift is coming in, even for 40 in one shift, we're talking about 16 spaces total for visitors. Is that right?
That's probably correct. Also, in our condition, or in the staff report, we do refer to on-street parking. And there's approximately 20 spaces that can be accommodated on Grande Vista Drive.
Okay, which would bring us up to 36 visitor spots.
Yes.
But how many beds total are we talking about here?
We're talking about 131 beds. Again, there's memory care, which essentially, those individuals will not have any vehicles associated with their stay. And of the assisted living, a lot of times, the average age is 85. And so, it's best to have non-driving privileges at that age. But then again, we see more and more older drivers. So, it's, it really depends on the, how the facility is being, is being run and--
I was really just looking to sketch out the low and high end of the visitor parking space, and I think you've done that, so thanks. Jumping around a bit here, sorry for that. Back on pages 29 and 30, we're moving more than 13,000 cubic yards of net haul from here. We don't know what the haul route is. Is there any precedent from local or similar projects in this area for what the haul route might be? Or do we just not know yet?
I think I'll have Jim Taylor address your question, please.
Yeah, this is kind of a remote area, but it has almost immediate access to Wendy Drive, as you can well imagine. It's actually a much more convenient truck route than we normally encounter within the city. So, we're not anticipating a huge haul route issue. There will be a lot of number of, a large number of trucks, more than we had previously approved. But again, they have immediate direct access to the 101 on Wendy, which is, of course, as you know, just recently beautifully improved by the Public Works Department-- in cooperation with Caltrans, of course. But the bottom line is, I don't believe we're going to have a problem with the haul route. Was that the substance of your question?
It is. So, just so I understand, we're thinking Grande Vista to Wendy to the 101 and that's it?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Correct.
All right. Thank you. And then the final question I have is with regard to public safety. This touches on Conditions 179 and 183 on page 80, but it's a larger question in scope. It's not about any specific question. If there were a wildfire, or an earthquake, or some other catastrophic event that required large and wholesale evacuation of this facility, is there a plan in place to affect that evacuation, especially with the single exit route we have on Grande Vista?
Typically, when the operator of these assisted living facilities look at emergency situations, there's usually a backup plan. And they try to make certain that, I think they work very closely with fire and police in these cases. Usually, they have drills that they coordinate with their employees and with the residents of the facility. So at this point, I can't answer your question. But we do have a member, the senior deputy, Ed Bogaie, I'm sorry, pronounced your name incorrectly, but we do have our senior deputy available for that. Perhaps he can add to that information.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it is a concern with a population that is not, perhaps not as mobile as some of the rest of us. Please.
Yeah. Make sure it's on. Yes, sir. What we do is we will roundtable these evacuation plans. We do have plans in place. I'm not privy to what they are, but I do know that they do exist for similar areas.
Right. So this is an area that's very close to an area of the Springs Fire, pretty close by.
Yes, right across the freeway from it.
Yep. And did require mandatory evacuations, not in assisted living facilities.
Right.
So there are, you're saying there are, the city does have plans in place and would be able to evacuate 110, 120?
Yes, sir. We would.
Persons.
Yeah, between the police department and the fire department, we can do evacuations.
Okay. And then a couple, just a detailed point, and I appreciate that this is not your day job.
Sure, no problem.
But on the specific conditions, one of the conditions requires a 40-foot turning radius. I'm presuming that's going to be adequate for whatever kind of emergency gear comes in or out of there to do turnarounds?
Yes, I've talked to the fire representative, and he's very comfortable with 40 feet. And if it's good enough for the fire department, it's going to be good enough for us. We're not going to have anything that's going to require 40 feet.
Very good. Thanks very much for your answers.
My pleasure, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. Ms. Leopold, the property down at the corner of Wendy and Grande Vista is being used now for road construction. And I know in the past that this board approved a Costco there, and then we approved a Lowe's on the property, and nothing was built. But that street is in such disrepair that I wonder, 1872 trucks just taking the dirt, they have to drive in to pick up dirt to bring it out, to export. So I wonder what condition this road's going to be in by the time this project is built out. Are there any provisions for any road? I mean, right now, if you drive over it, it's not a smooth drive until you get way up, almost, well, past that one business park, and then the road is very nice. I just wonder if there are any provisions for the street to be fixed?
I would like to refer your condition to Jim Taylor, Public Works Division. Perhaps he can provide a little more information on that.
Thank you.
We didn't think of that.
Oh, I'm sure you did. Come on.
No, seriously, I don't know that we actually considered the existing pavement condition down there. We're kind of accustomed to working around construction sites, but we didn't think that far into the future. If it suits you, perhaps I can compose a condition toward that end to make sure that the pavement is restored to an appropriate condition.
The pavement in the first place is in very bad shape. And I would think that eventually, if there ever was a project built on that corner, that part of it would be fixing the street or something. But so I don't think that they should be responsible for putting it brand-new looking. But I just know that additional, if it's in bad repair now, it's going to be worse after all the trucks go over it. They're going to beat it up more, even though there are conditions where the trucks have to be, you know, when the dirt's put in the truck, it's got to be cleaned and so that they probably have to put up a bond so that if any rocks fall off of it and damages the street. But I'm not saying where, I don't think they should be responsible for making it look like a brand-new street. But yet, it still is going to be pretty well torn up because it's not a good street right now.
Agreed. And again, I haven't assessed the condition of that pavement out there. I'm assuming you're talking about failures where it actually undulates, it actually has dips and that sort of stuff out there?
Yeah, not smooth at all driving up there.
Yeah, I haven't been up there since the last application.
And every time I go over that, because I do occasionally go to the post office, I think, why has nothing ever been done unless the city's just waiting for that property to eventually be developed?
So Commissioner Reynolds, Mr. Towne here has an answer for your question.
Okay.
Mr. Towne.
Thank you, Chair Roundtree. That road, you're correct, it's not in great shape, but that road alignment will be modified as part of the front side of Seventh Day Adventist property where the Costco and subsequently Lowe's were approved. So it may be in its current condition in part because everybody is anticipating that road will be slightly aligned where it essentially intersects with Wendy. Now, if Mr. Taylor, on behalf of the Public Works Department, would like to compose something in terms of potential impacts to the road in the interim due to the removal of the cut material, and that's certainly something that Mr. Taylor could craft, this commission could consider, and the applicant can consider it as well and react to it. But that road alignment will be changed when the front side of Seventh Day Adventist's property is developed in the future.
In the future? And how many years is that?
That is the question. That is the question.
And that's why I was hoping that those other projects or something had gone in there, so, because it was so badly bent. I would like to see some type of condition, not that it be put into a brand-new street, but that it's just really washed. And we always talk about, and I guess it started when I was on the county planning commission, and I was doing all the mines. And it's not just the trucks going out with the dirt, but those trucks have to go in. So they're not as heavy going in. But yet, they're big trucks, and they tear up streets, so. Okay, so I would like to see something. Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds, also something about maybe taking some photographs or some videos of the current condition of it. So when you ask someone to write a check for paying for it, we can have some kind of before and after, in some way reasonably assessing the condition of a road before construction starts, assuming the project goes forward. Any other questions? That's a yes? Commissioner Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have my, a couple of round two questions. Thank you for indulging me. In reading the report as well as the environmental document, I was a little bit concerned about the noise factor and just standing on the street. I presume the commission has considered this in the previous two renditions. But now that we're going to have residents even closer to the freeway, and I noticed there is some requirements for reducing the noise, but I'm just curious, how do you reduce the freeway noise when you're 60 feet away from it without a sound wall, without any barriers whatsoever, to any type of a tenable condition where if your front window is looking at the freeway, you're going to like living there?
I think I can perhaps help you with that, Mr. Nichols. The, as you know, the building is situated such that the exterior areas that the people will really be spending time in are sheltered actually by the building, which acts in itself like a sound wall. So that will, that will help with mitigating that kind of situation. Any of the other external areas that would be subjected to that sound have got various types of sound structures around them. And there's a balcony that has that. That mitigation is required and was required in the original project. The other thing really is the interior noise, which needs to be 45 decibels, and that can be controlled by the building materials. So that, does that answer your question?
Well, yes. I know we've had this discussion several times, Mr. Burden, and I appreciate your trying to clarify this for me. I guess my concern is, you know, if I were living there and I never, ever once wanted to open a window, or never, ever wanted to go onto the balcony, I might tolerate it. But if I ever wanted to open a window, it wouldn't be but for a few seconds, then I'd shut it back up again because the noise would be just so outrageous. I'm just curious as to, you know, at what point do you say, you know, this is just not appropriate for residents to live in? So you're saying that if it can be with, if it'd be less than 45 decibels inside the structure with closed windows, then it meets the requirements?
That is exactly the case, yes. It's not an ideal situation in terms of noise because there are many places in the city that aren't. But we think we can mitigate it to the point where it is actually satisfactory.
And am I correct that there actually are some residents that will have their window facing the freeway, at least at the ground floor, within that 63-foot distance?
I believe there will be. I do not believe those windows will be openable, though. The whole idea is that there will be air conditioning, those windows, as far as I know. And, yeah, and Pam is saying they may be available to be opened for emergencies, but under normal circumstances, they would not be open.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Commissioners of Staff? Nope. Then we will now go to our applicant. And speaking here will be Dennis DiAbisi and a whole team of folks that if you need to have them come up, please, please do so. And just for the record, your name and city of residence.
Yes, my name is Dennis DiAbisi. I'm with Van Tilburg Bandvarden-Soderberg Architects. I'm representing the applicant, who is Willis Development. There's a representative here from Willis Development as well. I reside in Woodland Hills, California. And I just, a lot was already covered this evening, so I'm going to try to be as short as possible. I just want to tell you that there's a reason why we made some changes to the site and to the building compared to what you guys have approved before, or where your colleagues have approved before. The building was a inverted V, if you will, an upside-down V, and it was buried in the hill. When we went to try to put assisted living in that building, actually do that, we did not have enough light on the first floor. We also noticed that there was not enough exterior space compared to, you know, for the residents, compared to, I've worked on many facilities, including University Village, Thousand Oaks, Belmont, Thousand Oaks, over on Moore Park, and many other ones all over the western United States. We needed to have some exterior space that was not facing the freeway, was not facing parking spaces, and have the lower level not looking out at parking and loading zones. So what we did was we pulled the building forward, and we created exterior space in the back of the building to prevent the acoustics from the freeway, to help the acoustics from the freeway, to not have the views from the freeway, and also to create privacy and to create some enclosure. Also, what that did, the original building, when you walked in, you were staring at dark walls, and you were staring at a parking structure behind the occupied space. We could not do that. We've created a building here where, when you walk in, you're looking through windows to a courtyard in the back of the building. We also took the parking structure that was on the east side of the building. As you drive up in the driveway, the first thing you were looking at is a parking garage door. And we took that and we put it over on the west side of the building so that we could bury it. And when you look at the elevation, the front elevation, which would be your third board over, the top elevation, what that does is it allows us to bury the parking structure instead of just putting occupied space in front of it to screen it. We actually get to bury it now because it's on the right, the correct side of the site when it comes to the grades. And now what you're seeing is a two-story building over there, instead of a three-story building over there. And as you come, as your eye goes to the right on that top elevation, what you're seeing is it becomes a three-story building, and then it reduces down to a two-story building right by where you're entering the site. And there's windows, and there's occupied space, and residential feel to the building. We needed to do that to have it be a more attractive building and to have the human scale correct. The reason Ms. Leopold brought up that we have a portion of the building that's four stories. And the reason is, we took the third floor off the east side of this building, and we put it in the back where people can't see it. This way, you have a, again, you're looking at scale. You're looking at the appropriateness of the approach and the appropriateness for the resident and the visitor. So there were a couple of things that came up. I'll be quick about this, just some clarifications. The window issue, we are required by state law and required by condition to have 45 DBA within the facility. We're also required, when you have a situation like this along a freeway, you can't rely on the open windows for ventilation. You have to bring air in through ductwork. And you can't, and the windows can be open if someone wants to, but they won't need to for fresh air because we're adding cost to the building by putting ductwork in and working around that. Another item was the parking. My client, Willis Development, has been looking into an operator for the facility. They're called Integral Senior Living. They have about 90 communities around the United States, and they have 35 assisted living facilities in California. There's one right over, right down the street here, right down the 101 freeway in Agora Hills. And they've given input on this, on the operations and the employees. There would be 30 to 35 associates during the day, there would be 15 to 20 in the evening. Of that, the overlap, the employees that would be there at one time when they're changing and there are parking issues, would come up to be about 40. Your previous approval had a ratio of parking at, let me see here, at 38%. We've increased the percentage to 43% just based on the spaces on site. If you see, we've got about 13 surface parking spaces, and I believe the former site proposal had much less, maybe four. We also have increased the amount of parking in the parking garage by a few as well. It adds up to quite a few, quite a bit of an increase in percentage. It went from 43 spaces to 56 spaces. We also have, again, the spaces off-site and on the street that we can rely on, and we can also do some stacked parking within the parking garage on a holiday or something. And when you have a valet, and you can park within the aisles and have stacked parking. And I think that's about all I really need to say, unless you have some questions for me. Oh, I do want to mention one more thing. The exterior design of the buildings, it changed. The modern design of the building was pretty attractive, and I liked it. And I, it's one of my favorite styles, but it was an office building. And then someone was trying to put assisted living into an office building design. And there's ramifications to that. There's image issues with that particular kind of design where people equate it with healthcare and institutions. And that's, I'm sure you can understand that that's a, not a great perception for an assisted living facility or a memory care facility. If you're bringing your parents there and you're thinking about going there, you don't want to be bringing them to a hospital image or an institutional image. So we changed that. We went to a modern craftsman, as Ms. Leopold said, and we tried to scale down the facades, add more detail, make it more human. Thank you. That's all I have to say, and I'm open to questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, questions for our applicant? Commissioner Newman?
Good evening, and thank you for your remarks.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering if you have anything to add to the comments we've heard from public safety from the police department regarding evacuation plans for this facility, if necessary?
I don't have any additional comments at this time. It has not been a thought of mine. We haven't, I don't know if there's been any communication with the operators yet regarding that. Usually, that's coordinated with the operators and the police department and things afterwards.
Right. I'm not suggesting it is a problem. I am suggesting you could get the question at some point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Was it me?
Turpil, yes.
Commissioner Turpil, yes. I wasn't, no. I wasn't, no, I had to, you know, go telepathically with you, so.
Your honor.
And I'm sorry, could you, could you state your name again, please?
Sure thing, Dennis DiBiase.
DiBiase?
Yes.
I wish we could get somebody with a Smith up here once in a while.
I know.
But the, real, real quick, I was, I remember going through the process with the first project that came through, and it looks like we actually have more open space that's going to be pushed out there, which is really exciting. It looks really great. But with a project like this, when, from start to finish, how long do you expect it before the first resident moves in?
Depending, my, my experience, we haven't discussed this yet either, but my experience has been that these buildings take about 16 months or so to build. I believe the Belmont project took a little longer, there was some hard rock up there. So, anyway, 16 to 18 months.
You're talking about the project across, what was, the old Castle Hill?
You got it.
Okay, all right. And that entire time period is when you'll have trucks, well, let me, let me rephrase the question. The, the amount of dirt that's going to have soil that'll have to be removed, how, do you know the period of time that we'd be living with that?
That's something that's better for the civil engineer to answer. I'm not sure if I could answer that one. You know that when I say 16 to 18 months, you're talking about a period where you're doing the grading, right? That's the preliminary part of the project, and it's usually much quicker than that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for our applicant at this time? Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We have one public speaker card, Mr. Russ Sullivan. Russ, are you still here with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, would you like to come up? We have a speaker card here for you. You've got the podium, you've got five minutes and five sets of ears.
Nothing.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it. With that, we'll go back to Ms. Leopold for any additional comments.
I'd like to ask Jim Taylor to provide his draft condition for the commission's consideration.
Hope I can read it, it's very draft. Okay, I'm proposing that we have a condition that's entitled "Offsite Pavement Assessment", and it reads as follows. Prior to grading permit issuance, the applicant's engineer shall meet with the city engineer to evaluate and agree upon the current pavement baseline condition. The evaluation shall include photographs and a map exhibit to delineate street segments, their condition, and known existing problem areas. In anticipation of known truck loading during construction, the city engineer shall prepare an estimate of anticipated damage and shall retain an offsite improvement bond to assure restoration to the baseline condition.
Let me check with our lawyer here. Is she here? Is, pretty straightforward?
I didn't get to write, I didn't get to write it all down, but the only thing I might add is that, at the end of that, that the condition would also read that upon completion, the evaluation would be done as to whether any of the damages, any damage has occurred, and based upon that, the bond is, a portion of that bond, or the balance of that bond, depending on the damage, is going to be taken away and given to the city for the repair. And that would probably be it, in addition to that, so.
Okay, ordinarily, we would be negotiating this with the applicant as well. Forgive me if I'm out of turn, but, okay.
We will create a better.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Leopold, any other comments or questions at this point before I go back to the applicant for rebuttal?
Other than the fact that the supplemental did clarify condition number 96, and there was an additional finding then added to the, the major modification for the special use permit.
Okay, we'll be back to you in just a couple of seconds here, he's writing some things down.
Chair, round for you.
Mr. Town?
If I could just, just follow up on Ms. Leopold's comments. The essence of, of the change to condition number 96, just so the commission is clear, is to allow a slight increase in the size of the onsite monument sign for this project. It's normally limited to 32 square feet. Staff is suggesting that it be 50 square feet, five zero, because that monument sign will be some distance from the end of, of Carity Vista, I believe, it's about 60 feet away. And so staff feels that that increase in monument size is reasonable. They would not present an adverse visual impact to the freeway. So I just wanted the commission to be very clear about that. Reflecting that change to condition 96 is an additional finding, number seven. So as we get closer here to a vote on this project, I want to be sure that the commission is aware that, that staff is recommending those two changes, an additional finding, and that condition number 96 be modified as shown in the supplemental.
Thank you, Mr. Town. I'm sure we'll bring one or both of you back in when we get to that point. Any other comments or questions, Ms. Leopold, before I go back to our applicant?
Not at this time, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Nichols, question.
It's kind of a question for the applicant. Do you not have a civil engineer here, is what was my question? Okay.
Okay, I'm going to go back now to our applicant for rebuttal, and for the record, if you could give us your name and city of residence.
My name is Bill Smith, I mean, Bill Egredal. And I reside in Chatsworth, California.
Thank you, Bill.
I am the civil engineer. And Commissioner Nichols, the response to your question for the debris production, I'm not 100% sure, but I believe that it's, the fire factor that we used was six months after a burn. It's a county factor that's typically used in design. Like I said, I'm not 100% sure. As far as the grading operation goes, the grading will take approximately three months. So in that time period, they'll be hauling dirt off of the site to wherever the disposal area will be. Any other questions?
Mr. Smith, or Egredal? In past discussions with other projects, issues come up as to, when you estimate soil that's going to be exported, there's a somewhat of a fudge factor because you never quite exactly know until you get into the soil. What would be your estimate as to the accuracy? Are you looking at a 5%, 10%, 20% factor one way or the other as to those, the estimate that we have before us?
The answer to your question is, it's a function of shrinking, shrinkage, and bulkage. And the bulkage is going to be depending on, upon how the ground is, and we don't have the factors on that yet. So my guess is that it's within 20%.
So we, we could see an additional 20%?
If a bulking, if we had a large bulking factor, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. I'm going to bring up Mr. DiBiase, if you'll come on back, and we're going to give you a full five minutes for rebuttal if you need it, and then we'll get some other questions for you towards the end.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure if this is proper procedure, but we, I, I may want to hear that motion, that amended motion reread.
I'm going to have it read entirely, but I want to see if there's any other questions or anything you'd like to say before you repair words.
No other issue besides the response to that amendment.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I've spoken to Mr. Taylor, and he now has a additional aspect, so he's going to read the entire condition with the, the one change that we added.
Right, again, my reading, and everything's scribbled around here, so please bear with me. Okay, "Offsite Pavement Assessment. Prior to grading permit issuance, the applicant's engineer shall meet with the city engineer to evaluate and agree upon the current pavement baseline condition. The evaluation shall include photographs and a map exhibit to delineate street segments, their condition, and, and known existing problem areas. In anticipation of known truck loading during construction, the city engineer shall prepare an estimate of the anticipated damage and shall retain an offsite improvement bond to assure restoration of the, to the baseline condition." The supplemental portion that you requested. "At the end of construction, the city engineer shall quantify and estimate the required repairs and that dollar amount from, and, and collect that dollar amount from the applicant, or call the bond to provide funding to the city to effect that repair."
Yeah, my, my client finds that acceptable.
Okay. Are you clear on that? Okay. You have some remaining time, you could certainly, as I do in the TV business.
I'm all set. If you guys have any questions, you know, we're here for that.
Great. Any questions of Commissioners for applicant? Once, thank you very much, we're done. We have any other questions for staff before I close the public hearing? Commissioner Turpil?
I hate to make you do this, Mr. Town. And it's pretty straightforward here in reading it, but what was the reason, once again, beside a staff, on the supplement on the monument sign for condition 96? I, I was hearing you, but I wasn't receiving it, so.
It was simply because the, the planned location of the monument sign is about 60 feet from the end of the cul-de-sac. Normally, when we have monument signs, they're much closer to public streets. This one is somewhat removed.
Got it.
The normal maximum is 32 square feet, we're proposing 50 square feet.
Okay. And then I only had other, one other question, and it was just for information only, really, it was, I meant to call earlier today and speak to Mr. Taylor about it, because I don't want to put him on the spot, but the, but he lives with this stuff and sleeps with this stuff all the time regarding squimp, because we had a few meetings a couple of years ago, I think. So could you, on, on page 32, there's a part under drainage that talks about the difference between, that we're going to be following the permit dated July 2000, not the permit on 2010. Can you, it'd be difficult to explain the difference between those two?
Yes, I'd be happy to. And you're right, I do live, eat, and breathe this stuff, it's horrible. Well, I'm enthusiastic about my job. The difference between those two permits is almost like night and day. We previously had a requirement that, that applicants collect a very infrequent storm called a Q-100, a very rare storm, and only discharge a little bit more common storm of a Q-10. And that, what that basically means is you would be collecting, let's say, 100 apples, and only releasing 10 of them at a time. In the current permit, you collect all 100 apples, and you make them all soak into the ground. And so it's a very difficult permit to live under. Okay, so, so we're functioning under the 2000 permit mainly because this application had been deemed complete prior to the new permit, which went into effect in July of 2010, and then was subsequently amended, and due to a technical guidance manual deadline, only really required this capture and hold the Q-100 thing as of October of 2011. So in that intervening period, this application came forward, it was suitably amended, and it remains under the auspices of the July 2000 permit requirement, not under the 2010 permit.
I appreciate that very much, and I knew you could do it.
Thanks.
That's all, Mr. Chair.
One final opportunity for questions, Commissioners, for, Commissioner Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Town, just a follow-up on the monument sign, 50 square feet, how does that compare with the monument sign over in the Westlake Village area?
Oh, that's a good question. You mean the new monument sign, the new city gateway sign?
Yes.
That sign is deceivingly large. It's about, it's a little bit over 50 feet in overall length. It's actually 50 to 60 feet because it has some wing walls that are incorporated into it. And I believe the maximum height on that, it's eight to 10 feet in height. So, you know, it's a curved design, so I'd have to get out my calculator to figure out the, the overall square footage, but you're, I mean, it's, it's, it's much bigger. I mean, it's 50 feet.
About four or five times bigger, it sounds like.
Yeah, or, or more. So this is, this is in our mind, you know, modest increase in the maximum monument size. It, it's, it's a little bit larger than typical, but it's, it's really not close to that gateway sign that you, that you now see on the north side of the freeway.
And, and will this one likewise be illuminated?
Typically, they are. Perhaps, Mr. DiBiase can just confirm that quickly. We are, we are talking right now about the monument sign. As Ms. Leopold mentioned, the applicant will be constructing a gateway sign, already, the design of which has already been approved by city council.
Oh, okay.
Near this project, it's shown in the plans. That sign, in fact, will be about 60 feet long comparable to the, to the newly completed one on the, on the east side of town.
Okay.
Yeah, and the project, the project sign, which will be probably behind that sign, that city sign, will be illuminated.
Okay, okay. Thank you. One more time, any other questions for applicant? No, before I close the public hearing, therefore I will close the public hearing, and ask for commission discussion, possible motion. Commissioner Turpil, you were the first one to raise your hand, so I'm going to go to you.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that. I got to tell you, I'm very impressed with this second rendition of what they were, were looking at compared to last time. I think it has a lot of benefits, and it was kind of nice just sitting and listening, and every, every question being asked before I had to say anything. And to the applicant, I think you guys did a great job, I do appreciate that. So with that, I'm going to recommend that the planning commissioner move that the planning commission approve addendum to mitigate a negative declaration, number 272, mitigation monitoring and reporting program, TTMJ 2014-70374, and SUMJ 2014-70373, subject to the attached suggested conditions, and based on the following findings in our packet, along with the supplement on condition 96, and the additional, would that be a condition for, that staff has written up as far as the street repair is concerned? Is that good enough?
Good question. Me, she here?
We're good.
You're good on that.
Everyone understand the motion?
I put that in with 96, with number seven and 96.
Right, with, with additional finding, number seven, additional revised condition 96.
In our supplement, yes.
Correct.
Right.
Are we good?
We are real good.
With that, discussion, Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. I think third time is the charm, right? I've been through the office building, and then the first assisted living, which I like the roof of that, but I really like this new design. I think that it fits in much better, the craftsman style, to the hill and everything. It was a muddy mess when I was out there today and everything. Having, I, my mother passed away this last year at 97, and prior to that, we had spent a lot of time looking at assisted living places, so I'm very familiar with the different ones, and I remember even approving the first Belmont, and then it was scaled down, and the second one was built. And it is beautiful facility there. So the same architect then did it? Okay, so I know this is going to be a great project because Belmont is an absolutely beautiful place. I think that our city needs assisted living places. There are a lot of them around, but I think we can even use more. My mother ended up not being in one, she wanted to stay in her home, so she was able to do that. And with that, I'm really going to support the motion, and I'll be excited to see this facility built, so.
Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make four points about this application, all of which are mostly complimentary. There's been historically some opposition to cuts on grades that are above 25% on various projects around town. I think you've done a nice job with what was clearly necessary to do to get this, to I think you've done a nice job with what was clearly necessary to do to get this, to get this in. Historically, there's been strong opposition in this city to commercial buildings that are four stories or taller, and there is a four-story building as part of this project, but I think you've done a good job. I think someone, I think one of the applicants said, maybe Mr. DiBiase said, "We've hidden it," and I think that's true. It's not, it's not visible from the highway, so while I might not like to see a four-story building on a public street in Thousand Oaks, I think it is well-hidden and well-integrated into an overall design. There's an ongoing controversy with regard to average heights in the city, and it is possible to play math games with that. For example, if I have 100-foot property line, and I have a three-foot fence that takes up 97 feet of it, and I have a 75-foot tall tower that takes up three feet of it, I can honestly come to this commission and say that the average height of this property is five feet. I don't think you've done that here. I think you've done a nice job of averaging out different buildings, it's visually appealing. It is within average height guidelines that we're charged to enforce. You're not playing math games here, you're doing a good job of integrating different, different size buildings, and still staying within the guidelines that are required by city policy. And finally, I want to echo what Commissioner Reynolds has said, is that we really do need more assisted living facility beds in the city, and so because of that, overall, most of all, I support this motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'd like to follow along, first of all, with Commissioner Newman. Earlier this evening, I mentioned how our changing workforce is now needing Starbucks coffee at 5:00 in the morning. Well, our changing demographics is also needing assisted living, and so this is definitely something that's going to help. My mother-in-law lives at University Village, and again, I think we're at that age where we have parents or friends, parents or friends that are in these conditions where they need facilities like this, or are in them, so this is certainly beneficial to us. Couple of things, you know, concerns but also compliments. While there is a significant grainy component here, I do like the fact that the hall route is short and sweet, and it's right to the freeway, so that, and no residential impacts whatsoever. Often, that's a real challenge for us. Sounds like we've got the potential street repairs of any taken care of, so even though there's a lot of export, I don't see a lot of negative impacts from that. Mr. Newman also referred to the grading. While there is some grading, I think, within the 25%, it's within that little pocket that you have available, not really extending beyond that, only what's necessary. And I think the open space that the city and COSCA ultimately is getting is a tremendous offset to that, and certainly, while it may be smaller comparison to some of the open space we've got, it is certainly highly visible, and it will be wonderful to have that preserved, and I certainly appreciate that contribution of this project. While I do like a contemporary look in some areas, I think this Canejo contemporary look fits well. You know, we've seen so many versions of earth tone, that it's nice to have a few colors every now and then, but I think in this particular site, with the way it fits, I think this is perfect. I think it looks wonderful, I love the design, I think it fits well with the site, with the backdrop of the ridge behind it. I think it'll work quite well there. Again, the advantage of having the freeway recessed there, it's not going to really jump out at you. In fact, some ways, it kind of reminds me of what we've referred to the old city hall as the eyebrow on the hill. It kind of just, it kind of sneaks in there, so I think it'll work really well that way. So I think the design will be very complimentary of the site. While I am concerned about noise, I think you have done a great job trying to address that. I'll trust Mr. Burgess's assessment that everything is in compliance with CEQA, and that we're fully addressed with all those issues. Again, it's, like I said, standing on the cul-de-sac, it was, you know, quite apparent that you're right next to a freeway, so I trust that with the courtyard and the buildings acting as a buffer that it will do a great job with that. I think also, the other thing I thought about is this, this kind of presents as it does, it is a gateway to our community. While people are escaping Los Angeles to Thousand Oaks from one direction, here they're coming from the Oxnard Plains up and over the hill, and this is kind of like that, that first view that you get. So I think, you know, preserving that ridge behind it, and this is just be kind of tucked in there, I think it'll be a very, very complimentary entry to the city. So I think overall, it really meets a lot of what I would consider some of our critical needs as far as what it serves, but then also how it appears seems to fit well. So thank you for the design, I think it does, and thank you for the boards. I love to see things right in front of me, rather than, you know, trying to scramble through my papers, so appreciate that, but I definitely will support the project.
What are the advantages or disadvantages of being chairman and you've all, if you've served in this capacity? All the great questions are asked by the time you get to ask your questions, and also the great comments and the thank yous and follow-up are always taken by the time it gets back to me, and that's just normal, but I will tell you this, to impress our entire commission twice with detailed-oriented questions, some more from 30,000 feet, but to be able to pull this off twice, and I can't say what, how the vote's going to go, but that's impressive, that's impressive. We usually have dialogue back and forth about certain items, and we had good questions tonight, but this was, I'm very impressed when, I'll call it, my team, our team, goes through this two separate times. That's a big piece. Senior housing, we need more of it. I'll stand here till I turn blue in the face, we need more senior housing, and we need it now. Visioning is one thing, implementation is another, and it's now time to act. Thank you for choosing Thousand Oaks. Okay? With that, any further other questions or comments? We'll now move to a vote. Please vote. And as a reminder for this case, as other cases, there is a 10-day right of appeal with the Community Development Department. And with that, we're going to now move on. Item 7, Community Development Department reports and referrals. Mr. Town?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick note that our next meeting will be next year, in 2015, and it is likely to be on January 26th. As you can see, the January 12th meeting has been canceled, but we are looking at a case that, as I mentioned, is likely to be before you on January 26th, at least one case. And that's all I had at this time, thank you.
And I'd like, if I could, have a motion to approve the minutes and adopt the resolutions from our December 8, 2014 meeting?
Move approval of the December 8, 2014 minutes and resolutions.
Great, thank you very much. Any comments, questions, or discussions about those? Please vote.
Motion passed 4-0 with Commissioner Trupel abstaining.
Do we have any AB 1234 reports? Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. I was a guest to the city at the State of the City speech.
Commissioner Trupel is also?
Yes, I have to admit that I was there too.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Nichols?
Same with me, very enjoyable.
And Mr. Newman?
I too was in attendance.
That makes it all five who are attendants of the State of the City. Thank you very much. Follow-up, Commissioner comments? Any? Commissioner Reynolds, Commissioner Newman, Mr. Nichols? Okay, go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. I wanted to thank Mr. Town for preparing and providing us with a copy of the Legacy Report, Land Use Change in Legacy Areas. I read through that and certainly appreciated the time spent going through that, you know, especially some of the historical references, and the way things were, and the way things are, and the way things shall be. It was very, very helpful. I do have two requests, which might be supplementary, if you could. I noticed in absence was the Greenwich Village area, and I think because there's been lack of change in that area. But if you would be so kind as to maybe just kind of go back in time as you did with the others, when that area was approved, just so for time reference, and if there's anything of note, I, like I said, we really haven't seen anything of particular development changes in that area. I know recently, we had a lot adjustment, lot line adjustment for the three homes, but if there's anything, but I guess, hopefully, it wouldn't be anything too significant, just to kind of follow suit with some of the origins of the history of that area, and, you know, maybe over to the Wilbur Court, Page Lane area, just kind of that little contingent of hand. And then secondly, there's several references in the report to the changes that we would likely be seeing with the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan. And would it be possible to just have an exhibit that just shows that overlay of the Boulevard specific plan, maybe just on a single sheet of paper, with the current zoning, or I'm not sure, let you kind of figure out what would be the best way, whether it be general plan or zoning, so we can see where we are now, and, or what recently was there, and where we're going, and, you know, how that might be changing, just to kind of get an idea of how that area affects what portions of these legacy areas? It's kind of what I'm driving at, you know, where does it overlap, in other words? Because some of them, that overlap, that plan does overlap a number of those old legacy areas. It's more just an exhibit so I can have it for reference when we see some of these, you know, how it affects those current legacy areas? If you would be so kind.
No, I'd be happy to, to provide that information. I'm just thinking of one exhibit that in fact, we created for inclusion in the city's 50th anniversary time capsule, which shows, it's in a GIS format, of course, but it shows the boundaries of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, and then projects that have been proposed and approved on a parcel-by-parcel basis in various colors and so forth. With, we also included a full copy of the Boulevard plan, so that in 50 years, people can look at where we were in 2014 and where we are in 2064, and I think that will be quite interesting to the future commissioners and council members and planners and so forth. So we could take that exhibit and just massage it essentially, and add the boundaries of the adjacent legacy areas, and I think that'll, I mean, do you think that would, that would respond to your, to your question?
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful. I just was trying to get a little picture as to, again, where that does overlap with these legacy areas, so that when we encounter these projects, we can say, oh yes, that was in that legacy area, but it's also in a specific plan, and so we can kind of see how they overlap.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely provide those. I don't think that we're going to see real overlap per se, but we will see adjacencies between these areas and the Boulevard boundaries.
Thank you so much. Again, thank you for the report, I certainly appreciate that.
You're quite welcome.
Commissioner Reynolds?
I'd like to also pipe in on your discussion. You're talking about the Greenwich area, which is north of Hillcrest and Cinel Vista and through there, that that's under Caneo Oaks. In fact, that's, I have the CCNRs for that area, that people don't realize that it's really part of Caneo Oaks, and that's what it's always been called, the Greenwich, that area, if that's what you're referring to.
Well, I was thinking, long, north of Hillcrest, but actually, it goes down to T.O. Boulevard.
Right, Alamo where that street is.
Page Lane, down to Houston Drive, all those areas and through there.
Yeah, no, it's just that little pocket right there on the west side of Rancho Road, before you hit Hillcrest and then Cinel Vista and through there, that that's really under Caneo Oaks, and I think that was considered area two.
Yeah, there's the.
And then the other is one, but I used to work for the Homelessness Association, I was president, and I have the CCNRs, and people aren't aware because they think of Caneo Oaks having at least a half-acre minimum lot, and some of those aren't, especially as you go in Cinel Vista till you get to La Jolla, that their third acre in through there.
Yeah, there is that one little stretch in there that.
Yeah, one little stretch in there where.
The old Rancho Road, where the unpaved Rancho Road in through there.
Yeah, where the gentleman has his homing pigeons in through there, yeah.
Just so that we're all on the same page, what staff will respond to in terms of the boundaries is, is the Greenwich Village area as determined for special planning standards, there's actually special RPD standards for the Greenwich Village area, but it's west side of the 23 freeway north of Hillcrest going up to Page Lane, because you have so many long, narrow, deep lots, and so there are special development standards. That's what I would use then to respond to Commissioner Nichols' question.
I think below Hillcrest, between T.O. Boulevard and Hillcrest, there's a sign that says Greenwich Village. Is that, is that a different area?
No, it's the same. I apologize. It does extend south of Hillcrest, correct, down to T.O. Boulevard, you can see some of the older buildings right there behind.
With that, I wanted to kind of wrap up our 2014 year with a, have a great holiday season. We accomplished as a team a lot this year, we're likely to see even more next year. So yes, yes, if you looked at the development activity report, it's thick, it's thick. Before I forget, I do want to ask or thank Mr. Taylor, the Wendy Road off-ramp, I did not know that? That's great, thank you for you and all your team and Caltrans to pull that off, it's actually flowing quite well. But during the holiday season, be an advocate of the city of Thousand Oaks, so when you see people, let them know where we're from, because you might be in one part of the country, I might be in another part, but people want to hear about what we do out here. So I just wanted to thank you for all your work for the entire year, and look forward to a good 2015. And with that, we say adjourned.